Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call it to order. Canton Township Board of Trustees meeting on July 8th, 2025 at 7 o'clock PM. Let's see, I guess we have to do the pledge. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Seagres, can you please take role?
Supervisor Graham Hudak.
Here. Good morning, good evening.
As the record reflects, the Clerk Seagres is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Borninsky.
Good evening.
Trustee Ganguly. Trustee Foster.
Good evening.
And Trustee Ansari.
Saving the best for last. Good evening.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Okay, do we have any board and commission reports? No? Okay. We don't have presentations or resolutions. Public comment on agenda items only. Do we have any public comment on agenda items only? Not in the room. We have two attendees online. If you want to make public comment, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. Public comment to agenda items only closed. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved. Ma'am supervisor, I move to approve the minutes from June 24th, 2025.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Foster and Trustee, who else? Trustee Borninsky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to pay the bills?
Madam Supervisor, I motion that we pay the bills.
Support.
Motion made by Treasurer Slavens, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented. Item C1, consider approving payment to GHD for completion of the FEMA letter of map revision for Fire Station Number Two. C2, consider awarding a contract and purchase order for bay floor refinishing at Fire Station Three. C3, consider increasing blanket purchase order for Z Plumbers. C4, consider increasing blanket purchase order for Stone Co. C5, consider increasing blanket purchase order for Williams Emergency Vehicles and a budget amendment. And finally, item C6, consider approving the Entrado 911 Maintenance Agreement.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Ansari. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. General Calendar G1, consider awarding purchase order to Fishbeck for sidewalk gap and bridge design.
Playing catch-up over here. Madam Supervisor, I am speaking slowly. I move to approve a purchase order to Fishbeck in the amount of $77,800 and the associated budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Borninsky. On March 26th, 2024, Engineering Services received proposals from three of our firms under the existing master service agreement. Of those three, Fishbeck was chosen for engineering, design, and construction administration services for the sidewalk gap project. Filling in sidewalk gaps and adding bridges will result in better connections and improve mobility for all pedestrians and other modes of non-motorized transportation. Completing and improving sidewalk networks can help achieve many economic, social, and environmental goals. Sidewalks and bridges provide access for all types of pedestrian travel to schools, parks, governmental, industrial facilities, commercial areas, and other destinations. On June 6th, 2025, the Township Board awarded design of two pedestrian bridges to Fishbeck. Engineering Services has determined it is also appropriate to design a third bridge. Engineering Services is requesting a purchase order in the amount of $77,800 to Fishbeck to accommodate the design of a pedestrian bridge over Tonquish Creek on the south side of Joy Road. This location is near a school and has been identified as a priority sidewalk gap location near a school and house of worship, Plymouth Christian and Calvary Baptist Church. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't really have anything to add, other than there is a clerical error on the, that the amount is going to be 77,000. It's in the motion. The motion has the correct, the correct number, so. And I thank Trustee Borninsky for bringing that to our attention.
Okay. 77,800?
That's correct.
Perfect.
Okay. Any discussion by the board? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G2, consider approval of professional services agreement for public transit needs assessment and implementation strategy consulting services.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve purchase order and professional service agreement with OHM for the public transit needs assessment and implementation strategy project in an amount not to exceed $115,945, subject to approval by the contract by Township Legal Council and the associated budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. In early 2025, the Michigan Legislature, Legislature adopted Public Act 236, which prohibits municipalities in Wayne County from opting out of regional transit and authorizes a countywide millage vote to all county residents to fund the regional transit system. In anticipation of the 2026 vote and supported by the feedback from Canton residents during the master plan, public engagement, events, and activities, Canton Planning Division staff proposed to develop a public transit needs assessment and implementation strategy. This document will serve to understand the existing transit network within and surrounding the Canton community, as well as identify and recommend locations for future transit connections and potential expansion of existing service area route and operational hours. The assessment and implementation, implementation strategy will be based on public feedback that is currently underway via attendance at Liberty Fest and a community survey, as well as stakeholder discussions with residents and business owners that took place, that will take place in July 2025. If the contract is awarded, services are expected to begin immediately. Canton is, Planning Division staff is also coordinating with adjacent communities in Western Wayne County to participate in a regional assessment. The consortium could include up to 15 communities, each with varying needs and wants from its residence and business community. If the project is expanded to include additional communities, the bidding firms have expressed willingness to adjust to the expanded scope. The Planning Services Division recently issued a request for proposal for planning firms to provide consultation services for the development of the public transit needs assessment and strategy. The RFP stated the project is expected to take nine to 12 months and will include public engagement, analysis of existing conditions, market and traffic score studies, as well as recommendations and implementation strategy. The Planning Services Division received three bids from firms in Michigan and two of those firms subcontracted with transit planning professionals outside of Michigan. All three firms were selected to interview based on the responsive and quality, responsivenessness and quality of the proposals. Planning Division staff reviewed the proposals, interviewed the firms, and scored them. Scoring was based on each firm's qualifications. I'm sorry. Qualifications, responsiveness, as I said, biblical, experience, capacity, fees and rates, personnel qualifications, and references. The firm with the highest score was OHM Advisors. Although OHM was not the lowest bidder, OHM scored higher due to its demonstrated success completing a transit needs assessment in an adjacent community, its strong working relationship and project history with regional transit agencies and surrounding areas, and its staffing capacity and ability to incorporate additional communities into a region-wide assessment. Their services will be provided under a professional service agreement prepared by the Township's legal council. This is Director Norwood. Do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. As most of you know, this, this millage is coming next year, so we want to be prepared the best way possible, the best plan available for us in Canton, and also working in coordination with our neighboring communities in Western Wayne County. So this will get us going. OHM has worked in Livonia, so we're pretty excited about bringing them on to work with us. Also, Patrick Sloan's here, Community Planner Patrick Sloan's here to also answer questions as his division is going to be leading this, this effort. Thank you.
Patrick, do you want to kind of give a summary of what we've been doing so far?
Sure, thank you. As you had mentioned, there's a, a potential millage vote on the Wayne County ballot in 2026. And in advance of that potential vote, Wayne County is in the process of doing a countywide plan. And officials in Canton have met with some of the officials in Wayne County just to discuss what some of Wayne County's priorities are and what they plan to do in the coming months in terms of planning efforts. And concurrent with those efforts, we let Wayne County know of some efforts that are underway and have been underway by Canton Township to look at our own transit needs assessment. Not just because of the timing of the state law and the potential timing of a millage vote, but also with the recent adoption of our master plan, we have goals and objectives there that relate to transit. So with those goals and objectives, combined with the timing that we're in with the state law and the potential county vote, we think that now is the time to do a transit needs assessment and look at Canton Township and drill down into our transit needs, our levels of service, and what the public wants, as well as how it connects to the regional system and what our community partners want, especially ones that have historically opted out of SMART and may have their own public transit or may cooperate with adjacent communities on public transit. So it's a several months' effort, but it'll be concurrent with Wayne County's efforts. Wayne County is aware of the planning efforts that are underway. We're aware of what they're working on. So we think that we'll work well together on our concurrent plans and hopefully come together as the plans conclude with public comment and our priorities and that we can use our plan, our transit needs assessment and implementation strategy to feed into the county effort and advocate for the needs of Canton Township and our surrounding communities.
And you and Erin and team members were at the Liberty Fest. And how many did you, how many comments did you get there?
In terms of the boards that we had, I think it was in the hundreds in terms of dots that people had voted on the boards. We had several people sign up on our email list to get email updates. We had several people sign up to join the stakeholder groups, as well as people following up after the survey and reading in the focus have been following up continuously with Erin to request to be on a stakeholder focus group. So we're excited about holding those. We have a lot of participation. And the survey is still active and online. It's online until the end of this month. And the last time I heard, we had almost 700 responses. And many of those come from Canton, but many of the communities that we're working with, I think there's as many as 15 communities, have also put the survey out to their public. So we're really hoping for responses in Western Wayne, especially those communities that have historically opted out of SMART that are looking at regional transit for the first time in probably several years.
Any questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Dave.
Madam Supervisor, I also should note that this, this item did come out of the board retreat from this, earlier this year, though it was planned to use these dollars in 2026. However, some of the timeframes we received from the county, we had to move this forward to 2025 to get started on this, this effort. I think it's important to note that it was originally not for this year.
Right. That's right. Yeah, when we met with Wayne County, they kind of said they want our responses by September. So we're trying to do as much as we can by then, but we will, we, this is still going to take longer than that, but we'll give them as much as we have at that time. Questions or comments? Tanya?
So I was, I, I was having an email exchange with Erin and John, and they said that this, this can be expanded, this needs assessment. If other communities in the Western Wayne area who were opted out want to participate, that you, you guys are working with the planning, groups are working with each other, right? Like you have a group that is working and this can be expanded if need be for the other communities too. And we can have some buy-in from them too.
Yes, that's correct. Erin and, is leading an effort with Canton Township to collaborate with a consortium of up to 15 communities in Western Wayne to look at transit from a regional perspective and to hear from other communities in terms of what their transit needs may be going forward, especially with the prospective vote coming in 2026 and how we want to plan at a local and regional level as Wayne County is developing a countywide plan. And some of those discussions that have taken place within this consortium, we've let the consortium of communities know that Canton Township is working on its needs assessment, RFP, and procuring a consultant. And that one of the things that we want the consultant to be able to do is to expand that into other communities if other communities want to participate in that effort. So we hope that some do. We know that there's a regional planning effort underway by Wayne County to look at opt-out communities as well. So where this can supplement that planning effort, that, that's great. And I think Erin has a consortium meeting within the next week or two to talk to the team members of the consortium and let them know where we are with our planning efforts and see if there are any interested in joining this process formally.
And you mentioned about stakeholders and focus groups. Like, how, how much of, like, I, can we get some updates as, as and when these focus groups happen and when they're happening? So that maybe people who have not opted out, opted in to be a stakeholder are like, you know, want to be part of this focus groups. Maybe people don't know much about it. Maybe we can, we can include them too in the, in these focus groups. Because, you know, like, we, you have quite a big response to having stakeholders, but still I think there are people who are not really aware of what's going on. So maybe we can have, if we can have some updates for some time, like, you know, as the assessment is going on, that would be great.
Sure. Yeah, we're working on updates to the website, updates in the focus, updates on social media to try to get public participation. And even stakeholders that may be outside of the community but part of the regional network, we want them involved as well.
Any other comments or questions? This is a big effort and Canton is leading it, so that's really, that's great too. So all the communities are kind of relying and using our direction, which helps because a lot of them have not had the, the experience that we had and also they've been opted out. You know, some of them are even rural communities too, you know, on dirt roads, and so they needed some guidance, so that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G3, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to Sabre Building for cleaning services at Arts, Village Arts Theater Warehouse and Factory.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and issue a purchase order to Sabre Building Services in the amount of $41,000 for 2025 and $57,400 for 2026 and the associated budget amendment for 2025.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Treasurer Slavens. MSD Facilities pursued an alternative to an internal employee cleaning the Village Arts Theater Warehouse and Factory that will be opening later this year. With one individual retiring that is primarily responsible for the theater facility services, felt this was a good opportunity to evaluate the needs of these township-owned buildings. Upon evaluation and the public RFPs that were received, it would be financially advantageous and operationally efficient to pursue an outside contractor. MSD Facilities received proposals from 15 different companies, conducted several interviews, and selected Sabre Building and Services after going through an evaluation process based off the public RFP. Director Norwood, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. I don't have anything else at this time, but ready to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I wanted to thank Gage Flannery for answering a bunch of questions that I had about this. I was very hesitant when learning of this proposal, be because of past experience that I've had when I was a school board member with an outside contractor cleaning company. And so, you know, that, that was not a good experience. And I, I feel a little better knowing more about this. And it was actually kind of funny because when I was reading through the background materials for this company, they had my husband's company as a reference, which surprised me. I had no idea. But apparently they clean my husband's office, and he did have good things to say about them. So that also made me feel a little bit better. I do have a request, and that is that we evaluate this after six months and see how it's going.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item G4, consider awarding a contract and purchase order to Friends of the Rouge to design, install, and maintain a pollinator garden in front of the project of the Township Administration Building.
Ma'am Supervisor, I move to approve the contract and purchase order to Friends of the Rouge to design, install, and manage the Township Administration Building Pollinator Garden Project for an amount not to exceed $20,000.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Ganguly and Amara and Ansari. The shrubs in the planting beds. Borninsky. Borninsky, I'm sorry. The shrubs in the planting bed near the entrance to the admin building are either in poor health or considered invasive. The area between the eastern and southern facades and the parking lot is a typical grass lawn. The project would transform these areas into a pollinator garden. Staff started working with Friends of the Rouge to explore a pollinator garden concept for these areas in 2024. The deteriorating health of some of the vegetation in this area has accelerated the project. Preliminary plan for the area is attached. The plan will be revised to provide a picnic table area to south of the building and based on staff experience with vegetation and similar pollinator gardens. Planning staff contacted the Friends of the Rouge, a nonprofit organization with experience installing rain gardens and pollinator gardens, to explore this garden plan for the planting beds and lawn areas between the eastern and southern facades of the building and parking areas. Friends of the Rouge will refine the initial plan to address comments from leisure, leisure services staff. They will secure the planning material and other supplies. They will manage volunteers for installation of the garden and provide the necessary tools. Additionally, they will provide a care and maintenance guide for the garden. Leisure services staff will assist with the preparation of the site for installation such as removal of existing shrubs. They will also work with Friends of the Rouge to prepare educational signage to be posted in the garden. Installation is anticipated to start in early August with completion by end of September. Canton has installed several pollinator gardens throughout the community, including in parks and within utility corridors. These gardens provide habitat for essential pollinators, increase native biodiversity, and can reduce maintenance costs over time while also serving as an educational tool. Director Norwood, do you want, I'm sorry, Director Hoenberger, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Happy to answer any questions. We're certainly excited about transitioning these areas to more natural grasses and flowers and pollinator gardens. Much more biodiversity up there. We'll work closely with our partners in municipal services to coordinate this project around the parking lot construction because we want to make sure that none of the new plantings get destroyed by the, the parking lot work that will be done. So it'll, it'll kind of be time-dependent based on that as well. With that, happy to answer any further questions.
Clerk Seagres, you want to add anything? You're part of this. Establishing this.
Thank you. Really excited about this. Stumbled into it, and I think it's going to look great. I really do. I like, I just felt like a really kind of cool way to work with a community group and meet a board goal of, of the healthy ecosystems. When people walk into the building, it will, if this passes and we move forward with Friends of the Rouge and we plant, you know, native, you know, one of the benefits of native plants is that they don't require as much water and they, they do really well in the summer months when, when some of the non-natives don't necessarily do that well. And from a flower standpoint, they're all perennials, so they will either come back or they will self-seed the next year. So the maintenance costs should be minimal, but it's also habitat for, for pollinators. So when people walk up to pay their taxes or get their ballots next year for the two elections we'll be running, they will be greeted by, by butterflies and maybe some peaceful bumblebees that are not known for stinging.
Peace, man.
Public, if you see the bump, if you see bees, please don't freak out. They're not wasps, they're not hornets, hornets. They will leave you alone. But they will also give you food by pollinating apple trees and pumpkins and corn and all the stuff that we need to eat. So they're very important. They're very good. So I think it'd be a really cool project. And, you know, Canton Nature Society is really looking forward to help with the labor on this project as well if it gets passed. And then it'll also be less lawn for mowing. That area next to the building would not have lawn anymore. It would, but it'd have plants. And these plants also have very, very deep roots. And so they will help with stormwater runoff, which is, if you haven't been paying attention in Canton Township for the last couple of years, quite the hot issue, quite the hot issue in Canton Township. So hopefully this will help spur a renaissance in Canton of, of people doing similar things in their own yards.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, I, I'm very excited about this because in, in our own garden, we just had some native garden, pollinators, garden installed a couple of weeks ago. And they don't require any fertilizer. And they, like, you know, the, I think the people would like also put the wooden mulch, which is like, doesn't have any coloring in it and the natural wooden mulch. And so I am very excited and, as you said, as Michael said, it requires very, very less water. And it'll come up every year, and I am very excited that it will, it will help our vegetable garden. So bringing this again in our township, I think, is a great project.
Going to give us a tour of your garden, Tanya?
Soon. It's really small right now.
Pictures. Amara?
I'm really excited for this project and really thankful. I'm curious to, if you could share, is there other wildlife that would be attracted to these specific species of plants that you have listed out or the flowers? And how can we protect them from harm, from, you know, people passing by? I'm just curious about that too.
Sure. Really, you'll see all sorts of native Michigan wildlife that would be attracted to that, those flowers and natural areas, you know, rabbits, squirrels, et cetera. How to protect them from the people? Do they have a, an answer for that?
If you look at the design that's in here, you'll see like some native asters and things like that. One of the downsides to planting native plants is they do get consumed by animals as well. But as they say, if your garden isn't being eaten, then it's, it's not habitat. So what's great about a native garden is since, if you walk out right now, you'll see bunnies under the shrubs. They have to travel very far for food. But they're already here. And so like a lot of the ground, like the bunnies and things like that would probably stay on premises, the squirrels. They might eat some of the, some of the plants. The benefit is, is that by having a garden like that here, they wouldn't have to travel through the road to try to get food in the neighborhood in Glengarry across the street. So it actually might result in, in, in the animal, in the wildlife being safer by kind of having habitat this close to Heritage Park as opposed to not having any actual food source for them. Which we don't, right? The native barberry and the yew out there, they, they can't eat that. There's nothing there for them to eat. So they're going to try to get across the street to the hostas and, and some of the nice plants out there. So hopefully this will also help some of the people in Glengarry not having their hostas destroyed.
Okay, perfect.
We might need to add some extra plants next year.
For the deer. You know, the deer.
It'd be, it'd be interesting to see deer out there.
They go for hostas.
They, oh, oh, yeah, yeah, they do. So. But yeah, I think, so I think, you know, we might actually, one of the things we talked about is, is potentially trying to get it like a certified, like, natural, like, national wildlife sort of, like habitat. There's a certification process, but like you have to meet like seven little standards. You have to have water sources out there and actual like, so that like if we were to do that, it'd be kind of cool to have like a little sign out there. It's a certified wildlife habitat, but you'd have to meet the, the standards of the, there's a nonprofit that does it. And so that would also be a way to kind of keep, keep what's there there as opposed to, yeah, keep it, have it run out on the road. That answers the question. Greg did a great job.
Yeah, just wanted to say thank you to everyone who worked on this and everyone who's going to be volunteering for it. And, yeah. I am really looking forward to it.
We're the ones doing it.
I'm, I'm also very excited about this.
Yeah. Your shovel.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item, consider the addition of facilities specialist position to the non-union classified employee merit wage scale.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the addition of the facilities specialist position to the non-union classified employee wage scale at grade 208 in addition to the required budget amendment.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seagres, supported by Trustee Ansari. Borninsky, you guys are throwing me over there. Canton Township is serviced by the 35th District Court. The Township has taken a lead role in supporting the court with its aging infrastructure due to a lack of court staff. As a result of the Township's expertise in facilities management, the position of facilities specialist has been created to assist both the Township and the 35th District Court communities, which includes the cities and townships of Plymouth and Northville. The position is factored at a grade 208 and is classified as exempt. If approved, the position will be posted internally as there are qualified candidates within the township to fill the position. The funding for this position will be shared by the township and the 35th District Court communities. The new position is expected to last for a period of three years as a new facilities specialist will assist the court in working through its capital improvement program. After the initial three-year period, the position will be reevaluated for appropriateness and necessity. Director Howell, do you want to add anything?
This really has been a joint effort of the Supervisors Office, MSD Facilities, and Finance as well in bringing this to fruition. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Just to let everybody know also, so 35th District Court has a lot, lists a huge list of capital projects that they didn't have anyone to get it done. And so we went through them. We had a, we have a team here that helped them evaluate it, and all the other communities were really, they really liked Canton helping. They said they were very experienced and they liked what they did. So this was an easy pass, which I was really happy about. So we have a current list of capital projects, and we've already started them. So this is, good job, Canton leads again, yeah. All right, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Kate?
Yeah, so since this position's going to be, the funding's going to be shared by Canton Township and the other 35th District Court communities, can anyone give us an idea of how much we're responsible for and how much the other communities are responsible for?
The court, Canton Township makes up about 60% of the court, overall court caseload, so Canton Township is, will be paying for 60% of this cost. However, as a result of us overseeing the project, we did also request that the court pay for a portion of the supervisor salaries as well. So we're actually going to be billing the court about $8,100 a month to pay for this. So we're going to collect about $100,000 a year to help offset the cost of this. So it includes this position going from a part-time, we're anticipating a part-time person becoming a full-time employee, and then on top of that, the supervisors who will be overseeing these projects.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Next item, consider FOIA fee appeal.
For appeals, I don't typically like to start with a motion.
Okay.
Unless we would. Background, maybe.
Yeah, would you want to do it?
Sure. Yes. Technically mine, I, this is my first time seeing the RBA. But I know all about it. On June 16th, 2025, the township was given a FOIA appeal that was received at the June 24, 2025 board meeting. The appeal is to be considered at tonight's board meeting and is regarding a deposit request required to cover staff hours to search for, retrieve, review, examine, and separate exempt material that is in the FOIA request. And then the background is that there's, so the FOIA was submitted by Meatri Punjabi on June 12th of 2025 requesting building permits, permit reports for residential electrical and mechanical permits issued by Canton Township between the years 2000 and 2024. The building department will take approximately 16 hours to pull the reports required, requested. While the reports are running, no other work can be done on that workstation, requiring the established procedure of requiring a fee. The amount of pages that this report will pull also requires the review and examination for separating exempt information, adding hours to the fee. The total fee expected for the completion of the FOIA is about $484.82, which requiring a 50% deposit of $242.41. So that's what the background for the RBA says. That's a pretty good description of what had occurred. Somebody is requesting 24 years of records for all of these permits for the township is under the impression that there's a simple way to pull it. Unfortunately, that impression does not comport with reality, given our current system. As you've heard in the background, there's just a lot of time and work involved. Building Department applied the fee, which is a mathematic formula that we kind of apply to every, every, every time we get a request, we apply the same mathematical formula for establishing the fee. And that's the amount of money. And the appeal is that that's a lot of money and they don't want to pay for it. So as a student, I believe if you read the appeal, which is attached, kind of explains that, and then a reiteration of the assumption that we can pull it into Excel, which just is not consistent with the practices of the building department. Those are the facts and circumstances. I don't know if anybody else wants to talk.
Questions or comments? So did they say what they're using it for, why they need this, just?
Well, if you read the appeal, it says, I can read what he says. Well, in his request, which is attached, he indicated and said, "I am a researcher and PhD student at Michigan State University, and that's not why we're charging him a fee." "I am working," so I'm going to U of M, "I am working on a project that uses permit records to better understand the adoption of household generators, battery storage, and heat pumps across Michigan. I am requesting permit reports for residential, electrical, and mechanical permits issued by Canton Township between those years, or the full set of years after for which electronic records were maintained. I would like to capture the following fields in the permit reports." It says, "The job addresses, the permit date of issuance, the description of the work, installation of 10-kilowatt generator. Please note, I am not requesting photocopies or permits, but rather an export of permit reports that contain the aforementioned fields from the electronic permit database maintained by Canton Township." So it's a research project for a PhD student at the University of Michigan, or Michigan State, sorry. And that's what they're looking for. So probably just doesn't have a lot, you know, it's a student, doesn't want to pay 500 bucks for their research, which I understand.
I just wonder, is there a, Kate? Go ahead.
Yes, so I have a question. If you look at the document that includes the original FOIA request, there's a long exchange of emails, and on the second page of that, it says invoices, and then it says due $727.23. Is that an amount that is, that goes with this request?
No, the amount that we had given to them was 400.
I'm just wondering if we had already decreased the amount we were charging.
That's a great question. What typically happens is that for non-public safety FOIs, so for the stuff on the administrative side, Brendan, who is the FOIA admin clerk, will work with a requester during the process of a FOIA to try to get a better idea of what the scope of it is, and will frequently alter or amend a FOIA request given actual information when we have a better idea of what people are looking for. So the fact that there was initially a potential invoice of $727.23, it looks like we probably narrowed the scope of the request, got a better number. I don't know that, but to my knowledge, and I think, David, you would know this, I don't believe we've administratively waived any fees. I think we are, we are, it's solely based on the hours estimated. So perhaps initially we thought it would be more hours than 16, and we probably reduced it down to 16 hours after talking to the requester.
Anyone else? So in here it says also something about, make this larger, "I am not requesting photocopies," but it says, "If the permit database does not allow simple filtering based on project type, generator install," he could do it, but is there a way that we can filter out of the system, just?
There's been a lot of discussion with IT, building, and the clerk's office, and I think we would all like to have a system like he thinks we have, but we do not have a system like he thinks we do. And so to my knowledge, there is no way to do, you know, what he, what he wants. So all we can really do is meet the standards of FOIA, which is he's asking for documents, we provide the documents. We don't have the ability to pull the kind of report that he wants in the format that he wants. So the only option we have is to provide the information under FOIA, which is, you want this information about permits, we can give you the permits. I mean, I imagine, you know, had we moved to a different, you know, if we had a different vendor or something like that, ultimately, too, this is a lot of record. I mean, 24 years of, and keep in mind, if you've lived in Canton between the years of 2000 and 2024, we've been a little busy permitting mechanical and electrical things, tens of thousands of them. So, you know, in a community that might be just permitting like, you know, like a replacement of an HVAC system, you know, versus a community that's putting in 500 rooftops every single year for 24 years, it's apples and oranges. I imagine if they pulled this in like Lyon Township or Macomb Township, they'd probably get a hefty, a hefty fee too, because those communities have been expanding rapidly as well.
Yeah.
There's a lot of facts and circumstances here that, you know, unfortunately, sometimes saying, well, you know, I found in this community it was different. Yeah, I don't know how many, you know, the city of Northville would have permitted
Right.
during that period of time.
That's true. That is large.
And we just don't have the Excel thing that he wants.
Yeah. Tanya?
Yeah, I think like in most of the PhD research cases, people get the raw data and it's up to them to filter it. So I think it's reasonable to ask her, not him, ask her to.
The woman, I'm sorry.
Yeah, to basically, you know, it's a reasonable amount that we are asking for, and we're, I think, it's a lot of years, it's a lot of data.
Yeah. It's a lot of years, and I mean, every month we get a lot of requests, so we're talking, I think like Michael said, tens of thousands of.
Thousands, it would be thousands, yeah.
Yeah, thousands of records.
Okay. So do we want to try a motion then?
So it seems like there's consensus for a motion that we, that we would, I'll make a motion then that we just kind of uphold the fees, so, and see how that goes. Madam Supervisor, I move to uphold the fees for FOIA 25683.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Borninsky. Any other further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Next item is consider appointments to the tax board of review.
Madam Supervisor, I move to approve the appointments of Raj Grewal and Wisam Hamood to the Canton Township Tax Board Review for terms to retroactively begin on January 1, 2025 and end on December 31, 2026.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Foster. I think they were doing it because of training. That's why they, that's why they're doing it that way.
Uh huh.
The tax board review is required by Michigan State law. The board is necessary to examine the assessment role for the year and also to consider appeals from residents related to principal residence exemptions, qualified agriculture exemptions, taxable value uncapping, the qualified startup business exemption, disabled veterans exemption, and poverty exemptions. Members are appointed by the township supervisor with approval from the board of trustees. Six people are appointed to be split into two, three-person boards, giving residents a variety of appointment times to choose from if they have an appeal. There is also an alternate person appointed to step in should a board review member be unable to fulfill their duties on the designated dates. The board meets in March, July, and December. Due to the tax board's bylaws, terms are set to begin on January 1st of odd-numbered years and end on December 31st of even-numbered years. So that's, anyone have any questions? Summer?
Just a brief comment. Trustee Borninsky and I interviewed the candidates for the tax board of review. We had an immediate vacancy, and we will have a vacancy in January. So we decided to appoint them both at the same time, as you said, Madam Supervisor, due to training, but these are two great candidates who I'm very excited will be joining the tax board of review, and they are really excited as well about serving Canton Township.
Yes, they are. So it's Raj Grewal and Wisam Hamood. Okay? Any other questions or comments?
Comment? Yeah, I echo what Trustee Foster said. They're both great candidates, and we're lucky that they picked us. And they both have, you know, experience that's relevant, so I think they will serve us well.
Great, thank you. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Additional public comments? Any in the room? Nothing in the room? Let me look online. Online, oops.
Gauge?
Yeah. Yeah, I think they're all gone, zero. No, we have no one online. Let's see, administrative comments in the back. John? No? Patrick? Michelle? Chad? Nope. No, no, they're all shaking their heads. No, Deputy Supervisor? No. All right. Amara?
I hope everyone is staying cool in this heat. It seems like things are turning for the better now, but apart from that, I hope everyone has a great Tuesday evening.
Thank you. Kate?
Nothing to add to that.
Diane?
The only thing I want to add is we did mail the property taxes out. I haven't gotten mine yet, so I would think by the end of the week, they will be in your mailbox, and you have till September 15th this year to pay your taxes.
Tanya?
Oh, I have nothing to add. Have a great summer, stay cool.
Summer?
Yeah, have a great summer, happy Tuesday evening.
Michael?
Been searching my brain and I can come up with nothing to say, you know, but I do want, I want, you know.
Is that a first?
Only having a 50-minute board meeting is just, that's, I see feels like a crime, so I feel like I should say something. No, you're the one who's asking, you're trying to go find neighbors to get them in here to make a public comment. No, I have nothing to say. Thank you. Good meeting.
Well, I mean, we do have, we did have an opening at Barchester Park. We also just won another award for the Michigan Green Communities.
Oh, I saw that on Facebook.
Yeah, so that's great.
Yeah, that was great.
We're at gold status. I think they've also raised a level. Now they have platinum status. So now we have to, yeah, too many of us are at gold, I guess, I don't know.
It should be green status, right?
Green status. And Thursday, we have concert, Thursday night concerts. I hope it doesn't rain, supposed to rain this week, but hopefully.
Did you go to Tuesdays Are Terrific today, the concert?
We got there at the end, yeah.
Oh.
So we missed it, but next Tuesday. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, so moved.
Support.
Motion made by Clerk Seeger, supported by Trustee Ganguly. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.